Very good. Welcome, everybody. This is the Red Hook Town Board's special meeting of April 26, 2021. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a very short meeting, but important meeting. We had some scheduling difficulties, so we needed to call a special meeting on a couple of counts. And we're happy to have happy to have folks from the Red Hook Central School District with us tonight. Don't really have any announcements to make for the public, except to thank everyone who showed up Saturday to do our 13th Annual Red Hook Cleanup Day. We were amazed by how many volunteers showed up. Over eighty of them. We'll get a final list when some of the groups give us the exact count. But we hit just about every road in town. We only have a couple that we need to address at this point. And it was just a wonderful event. The weather was perfect. Want to thank, obviously, Bennett Village Pizza, who supplied us with all those pizza coupons for our volunteers, and Patty Bowman at Holy Cow. Once again, just incredible generosity on their part. We had cosponsors this year, and I think we're going to have cosponsors every year because they were so helpful. The Red Hook Rotary, the Red Hook Public Library, the Red Hook Community Center. Who have I left out? I know I've left somebody out. But we had great groups. The Girl Scouts participated, the Ability First Group, Bard College, thank you very much. Obviously, Lori Houston, our CAC Chairperson and all-around superstar, got us involved with recycling cigarette butts first for this year. So just many thanks to everybody who participated. This community really does run on volunteers, and we can't thank you enough. So with that being said, welcome, folks, from the Red Hook Central School District. And who would like to start and introduce who's with you tonight?
I can start. Thanks for having us. I'm Janet Warden, Superintendent of Red Hook. I have Bruce Martin here, Assistant Superintendent from Business, and our Board President Kate Corpus is here tonight.
Good evening.
Hi. Thanks for coming.
We have a presentation. I think I have sharing rights, right?
Yes, if you'd like to share your screen, that's fine.
Okay, great. Okay. Everybody see?
Sure.
Yep.
That's good.
Okay, thanks again for having us. We'd like to share the budget that we've created for the 2021-2022 school year. Our guiding principles in our developing our budget this year is to be fiscally responsible. Obviously, continued to be times of uncertainty. And one of our main principles was to be under the tax cap. And we will also talk about, as many of you have heard, about COVID relief funds that we're also receiving as a district. Another principle that we're looking at is we've learned a lot from this past school year as far as educational technology, about our students, about learning in general. We know that next year, we also need to be prepared for differing student learning needs. As students, some of them have been on remote since last March, other students coming back. Also, integration back to school, which we've already started, looking at mental health and also equity needs. And also, how do we increase student engagement and community engagement as we move forward as a district? Continuing on our priorities for this coming school year, obviously, in teaching and learning, is we've learned, really learned that smaller class sizes are very effective. So we're looking to preserve that or additionally have lower class sizes, especially in our primary schools. Adding additional technology, looking to make sure that all of our secondary students in the high school have a computer available for them. Also, increasing intervention services, so students that may need some additional support in math or reading or writing. We also want to preserve our rigorous course selections. Coming from many other districts, we are, it's amazing that Red Hook continues to have advanced placement courses, as well as IB courses, as well as honors courses, as well as inclusion courses for all our diverse students' needs. We definitely want to preserve that. We're also looking to join the Center for Sustainability and Climate Education Consortium at BOSI's that will help to educate our students how to be activists around that area, as well as help us to teach that in our classrooms and provide professional development. We're also looking at adding more project-based learning, which is basically inquiry-based, and adding students' interests into that. And also looking at interdisciplinary programming, especially at our high school, where teachers from different disciplines would teach together a course moving forward. As you know, I'm sure as you drive by, we have this beautiful auditorium that we would like, we will have people from the community to be able to come in soon and take a tour. With the completion of the auditorium, we're looking to expand our course offerings inside the school, as well as programming and community engagement, so that community members can also use it. And we're also looking to hire a theater teacher, so again, to not only help us with our course offerings, but also to help us with our productions that I believe have been in the gym prior to this. So it's absolutely beautiful. So we're looking to really make sure that that's something that's, you know, a highlight of our school community and the larger community. We're also really going to be focusing on mental health. We have a lot of counselors in our school right now. We want to make sure that through this budget process, we can preserve them. We also have a college counselor at the high school that works just on helping students get into college or look at military or other avenues, technical schools. So we want to make sure that we preserve that. We also want to look at social workers. We have social workers in our elementary school. We want to make sure that we have that additional support at the high school and the middle school as students continue to have, you know, needs around, you know, anxiety and things of that nature. We're also working a lot with our equity, diversity, inclusivity work. BOSI, such as BOSI's, is also going to be starting a center for equity, so that all local school districts can help participate in that. And we have a date coming up where our students are actually going to participate in the county and working together to talk around issues of equity and diversity in our county, and also continue to work with a company that we use called Educational Elements, that's going to be working on the district to look at this lens when we talk about our culture and our curriculum. Another really important thing that we're working on is expanding communication and community engagement. Our website, we've had some not-so-great feedback sometimes on websites. Websites gain a lot of information, and we have to go through and take things off and update and really look at the best way to engage people, especially a lot of families. That's the first thing they see when they want to move up to this area. They go on and look at our website. So we just want to make sure that that's up to date. We're also emphasizing on bilingual communication. We've had a lot of feedback and really looking to improve that in the district as well, and also community engagement. For example, tomorrow, at nine o'clock and six o'clock, we're going to be having Red Hook Conversations, which will be talking about the future of the district, things that we want to really preserve and goals that we have for the district. So continuing to increase community engagement with parents and community organizations. After-school activities and sports, we know that kids love this, and a lot of times, this is why our kids come to school, is because those after-school activities and because of sports. So we'll be looking to provide some additional interventions, supports before or after school. Looking to create a swim team moving forward, and also additional clubs based on interest level. So those are things that we're looking forward as our priorities when we created this budget. So I'm going to turn it over to Bruce. He's going to talk about where we are so far in the process and as well as information about the money side.
Thank you. And thank you also to the Town Board for giving us the opportunity to use your platform here to talk about our budget a little bit. On this slide, I'm going to skip by the things that have already happened and that have passed. But going forward, a few important dates that folks should be aware of. Next Wednesday evening, May 5, there will be a formal budget hearing, where we will talk in much more detail about this budget. It is legal notice to be either in the 35 cafeteria at the Mill Road School or via Zoom technology. And I believe we'll be making an announcement this week at our board meeting as to which of those methodologies we will be using for the public hearing on May 5. In either case, it is at 7:00 PM in the evening on Wednesday, May 5. We have a voter registration each year on the Wednesday prior to the budget vote. So if individuals are not registered to vote, they can come on May 12 from noon to 9:00 PM in the Mill Road School 35 foyer. And there will be a voter registration there. That will be registering for school purposes only. So it won't get people registered for general election, but it would get them registered to vote at our May 18 budget vote, and that's the last bullet there. May 18, from noon to 9:00 PM, we will be voting in the Mill Road Elementary School 35 cafeteria. And that's the statewide budget vote date. And we can go to the next slide. This is just, in a nutshell, a summary version of the budget, and I won't spend a lot of time on the details here unless folks want to ask me questions later. But I will say that this has been an interesting and challenging budget year. I've been saying to anybody who will listen, it feels like we're aiming for a target that we can't quite see yet. So we think that in September, we will be returning mostly to normal. But it's a little bit cloudy yet as to what that looks like and what the requirements will be. It's also the case that schools are very cyclical in nature, and oftentimes in budget development, we have a lot of really good evidence to follow from the current year and the preceding year. And in both cases, those years have been very fiscally abnormal. 1920, as well as 2021, have both been unusual fiscal years, marked by a lot of unexpected expenses related to operating school with COVID, but also a lot of savings from programs that didn't happen because of COVID. So those two normally most valuable pattern years really didn't exist. So we've developed a budget that we think will get us to that close-to-normal reopening in September. On the expenditure side, we are increasing by 1.9%, and you can see category by category on the slide there where the changes are. And then on the revenue side, state aid is coming in pretty nicely, at 3.79% increase. Not quite as nicely as they'd like you to believe in their advertisements, because there are a lot of overestimated revenues, and that's kind of an annual thing that happens. And then the tax levy, under the tax cap by quite a bit, and I'll talk about that on a later slide, we're looking at a 1.52% increase. And I think we could go to the next slide. So here is the tax levy, and you can see the base year, current-year tax levy. The proposed tax levy for 2122, and that is a 1.52% rate of increase. The tax cap calculation produces an authority of 2.02% with simple majority approval of the public. So we are $178,611 below the tax cap calculation in the proposed budget and the proposed levy. And the final bullet there is a disclaimer, which says, although the levy is moving at 1.52%, there are a number of factors that make individual properties and town-by-town changes a little bit, they will vary above and below the 1.52%. So some of those things are what happens with town-wide revaluations, equalization rates set by the state, and changes in the STAR program. All can have an impact on what an individual taxpayer will see. But the levy itself is proposed to move at that 1.52%. And we can go to the next slide. In the event that the voters do not approve the budget on May 18, the board would have the option of submitting either the same or a modified budget on the third Tuesday in June. If the board either chooses not to submit the budget a second time, or if the budget is submitted a second time and still does not produce a voter-approved budget, the board would be obligated to prepare a contingent budget. And that contingent budget would require approximately $538,000 of reductions or closing of the gap to get to the contingent budget. It would involve eliminating most equipment purchases. That's required by law under a contingent budget. It would eliminate the free community use of our buildings and outdoor facilities, and that's also by law. It would require us to not make our annual $100,000 transfer to capital project. Every year, we do some facilities upgrade work with that transfer to the capital fund, and it gets aided in the ensuing year at 64%. So essentially, once you get that up and running, you're doing $100,000 of work in year one, getting $64,000 of state aid reimbursement in year two, and then perpetuating that forward. However, in a contingent budget, that would not be an allowable expenditure. So that would have to go off of the budget. In order to get to a contingent budget, we would have to look at program reductions, and it would reduce our ability to address the needs of our students returning as learners to the school district in the fall. And we would also have to look at reducing our financial resources, which we're currently still holding for some of the uncertainties that we see out there right now in the environment that we live in. And we can go to the next slide. In addition to the budget on the ballot, there are a number of other things going on. There are actually two board seats on the board election. There is a full term, which would be the regularly scheduled cyclical replacement. And then there is an additional election to replace a resignation that has happened on the board. So the top vote getter will get the full term to begin on July 1 of 2021 and run three years through June 30 of 2024. And the second top vote getter will take their seat immediately on May 19 and will sit there for just over two years till June of 2023. There is also a bus-and-vehicle proposition on the ballot. That would be two full-size buses, a wheelchair van, and a maintenance vehicle. We did defer that proposition entirely last year in the face of COVID. There is a proposition from the Tivoli Free Library to modestly increase their allocation. And as you know, you have a guest this evening from the Tivoli Free Library, who will probably add some commentary there. We have an item on the ballot to approve the student board member. The non-voting student board member has existed for eight or 10 years now. But the regulation that enables that requires the community to reestablish that every two years. And this is the year that that goes on the ballot. And then there's a proposition on the ballot to increase the board size for the Red Hook Central School District from our current five-member board to a seven-member board. Should that be approved by the voters of the district, a special election will be held in July. I believe the date we're shooting for right now is July 13, at which those two additional seats would be filled. And that would be assuming voter approval on May 18. And we can look at the next slide. Separate and apart from the budget that I have described, there are two pools of federal stimulus money out there. When added together, they total almost $3.4 million. These cannot be used as general fund revenues. They can't be used to offset the tax levy. The intent of these funds is to help bring schools out of the COVID environment. And one of those pools of money is the CRSA funding that was passed back in December from the federal government. Red Hook's allocation is almost $1.7 million, and that is one-time money. So we have to be careful how we allocate it. But it's one-time, but available through September of '23. And then the more recent stimulus package, the ARP funding passed while the Biden administration was in place just about a month ago, creates another pool of funding, close to $1.7 million. Again, one-time money, not eligible for the general fund appropriations, and available through September of 2024. So we've entered into some significant discussions on how to best use those pools of money. We are actually still awaiting guidance on the details of what eligible expenditures will be under those two programs. And again, those are separate and distinct from the budget that the community will be voting on on May 18. And we can look at the next slide. I really think I've covered all of these things. I guess I would reiterate again that this was just an interesting and difficult budget year, still aiming at a target that we can't quite see yet. And I will pause there if Janet would like to add any additional comments or if the board has any questions.
No, I think it's really important to know that, you know, we're bringing in a budget that is below the tax cap. And like Bruce had mentioned before, that the stimulus money is going to come with a lot of probably implications on how it can be spent. And it's not something that's sustainable. So we're going to be looking at, you know, programs in the next couple of years for our students for those one-time purchases that were, whatever's going to be allowable in that as well. Kate, do you want to add anything?
No, I think, as usual, Bruce did a great job. You know, very challenging year, but I do think our focus is really next year. And I think we've put a lot of thought into, you know, meaningful reentry for our students, lessons learned, very thoughtful programming, like we said, additions of programs and sports and PD for our staff. And we will be very thoughtful in using this federal money. I mean, I know small businesses have received one-time payments, so we just have to be very cognizant and, like we said, wait for the contingencies and plan forward. So we're looking forward to it passing and a lot of growth on the board, a lot of change. And if anyone has questions about the proposition of five to seven, I would just comment that it's been a topic among the board off and on for a few years. We've had increased interest. I think in the upcoming election, we have, I believe, six or seven candidates for the two spots, including myself. I'm going to run again for reelection. So I think that with increased committee work, just, you know, interest in participation, we're looking at that as a positive expansion of the board. So we'll see what the community thinks. And just encouraging people to get out and vote on May 18 is critical. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. To the Town Board members, does anyone have any questions about the school budget before we go on to the libraries?
I just had a quick question for Bruce. On the stimulus money, you said that under the first grouping, CRSA, there was about $3 million, and then Red Hook's share was almost 1.7. Is that right?
No, sorry if I said it that way. The, I don't remember what the total price tag was on the federal stimulus package of the December package, but the Red Hook share of that December package was just under 1.7 million. The federal number for both of those packages was in the trillions, and it was a nationwide package. The second one, I do remember a little bit more clearly because it was a little more recently. That was, I believe, 1.9 trillion at the federal level. The Red Hook share of that one was also just under 1.7 million. So combined, the 3.4 number is the total amount that Red Hook sees from those two stimulus programs combined. Nationwide, I believe these were close to four trillion when combined.
Okay, you probably just said million instead of trillion. And so do you expect to get any guidance on how that money can be spent before the budget vote?
We have a little bit of guidance, but I don't expect the clear guidance for quite some time yet, probably even into the summer.
Okay, thank you.
My question relates to the solar project and any other renewable energy initiatives by the school district.
The solar project is still in the works. It actually is beginning to sound like it could become a better project ultimately because of the delay. Some of the pricing has gone down, and some of the technology that they would install would, I guess, be a little bit better. You guys are probably much better experts on the technology than I am. But that project did get delayed during COVID as well. Just the ability to work on it got delayed, but it is still in the works. We do have, from two years ago, we do still have the voter approval to move forward with that project. It's still projecting to ultimately pay for itself. And we are hopeful that the folks at SED, State Education Department, will remember that they said in addition to that, they were planning to give us building aid for working on the project. So even without the building aid, the project does eventually pay for itself. But with the building aid, it's a very positive thing for the community of Red Hook. So it's still in the works. We're hopeful that SED remembers their promise, even though it's been a couple of years. And I think you'll see that happen eventually as we work our way through that.
Okay. May I encourage the sooner eventually versus the latter, Bruce?
Yes, indeed.
No greater tool for teaching these important efforts than by demonstration. And, you know, we've tackled all of our municipal buildings, both villages and townships now. We have solar for 280 homes. Don't already have it individually. We'll be talking again later tonight about energy supply and procuring it for the entire township, residential and small commercial as well, an extension of a program we've been in for 18 months. So we'd love to see, you know, the school join those efforts. And obviously, we'd love to see our younger folk see it on top of their schools, so. Great. Well, thank you very much. Who would like to go first on the libraries? Well, how about Tivoli? Laura, did I see that you joined us there?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you. I think. I can't quite see you, but good to see you nonetheless.
I'm here somewhere.
Okay, there you are.
My name is Laura Gail Tyler, and I'm here to represent the board for the Tivoli Free Library. And of all the words that I have caught, I think I quote Bruce in saying that we are making a very modest request for an increase this year. Last year, we had planned to ask for an increase, and then obviously, like everybody else, the pandemic struck, and it didn't seem at all appropriate. And so this year, we are asking for an increase for the health of the library and basically to continue supporting the programs that we have. I think that our library has done a great job pivoting, like many have had to, to invest in technology and learn technology and jump online for programming. Our staff has done a great job, and largely, what we would do with an increase is to take care of our staff. We've had a few new hires, and we want to make sure that we continue to support them and offer a living wage, because they are the heart of our library, and they are the ones who offer the programming that we all enjoy. So online content was up by something like 69%, understandably, for the for the pandemic, and we have had a lot of unique programs, take and make activities that just fly off the shelf and things like that. So one thing that I want to bring up is that the average household would only see an increase of a dollar and 38 cents per year. That's annually, which I think is a small amount for the value and the resource that our library is. So I'll keep it brief, but I I'm I'm a huge fan of the Tivoli Free Library, and I would like to see it supported.
Thanks, Lauren. Thanks for all the work that you and all the volunteers, employees and volunteers do and both of our libraries.
Thank you.
Anything else related to libraries? I don't know. Do we have somebody here from Red Hook Public Library?
They they were on the invitation list, but they actually chose not to seek an increase this year, so they will again, get their same allocation run through the school process, but they they chose not to be on the ballot this year.
Okay. Very good. Town Board, any questions that you have of the libraries or the school district? Before we bid them farewell. Okay, hearing none. You must have done a terrific job. Thank you all very much, Bruce, Janet, Kate, Laura. Thanks so much for your presentation tonight. And as a reminder for the voters, we'll have the information up on the screen. But the voting is on May 18th. And if for some reason you are not registered, that is May 12th, the deadline, and that's noon to nine PM. I think it was not on your slide, but we'll put that up on the website as well. Bruce, I guess that would be a question for you and Janet and for Kate. Are you seeing anything demographically that we might be interested in in knowing?
Well, some some minor things, we're seeing a lot of migration from the South into the Red Hook District. We continue to have people interested, even if they decide to live in a neighboring district. We still have a handful of folks who like to tuition into Red Hook for the schools. And I would say that we are seeing substantially smaller classes entering kindergarten these days. And that is a function of the birth rate in the area, and it's not just Red Hook experiencing that, but it's Dutchess County and New York State, and I think even across the country. And so we're seeing smaller kindergarten classes joining us in in recent years. Those that I guess would be the highlights of our school demographics.
I think it was just in today's New York Times, right, that the census reports slowest growth in population since the 30s, I believe. So it would it would certainly make sense. Well, thanks for sharing that, Bruce. And and thank you all again for coming, and we wish you the best. And thanks for all the good work that you do on behalf of the folks in the school district and obviously the libraries. It's just amazing all the programs that you're you're running through your your operation. I can't even keep track of it, but please do try and feed us as much information as you have, so we can help you get out the word about them. Okay, thanks very much, all.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye bye. Okay, so Town Board, let's move on. We just have a couple of technical things that we need to accomplish tonight. One is just authorizing the execution of the extension of the CCA. That's the Community Choice Aggregation. We spoke about this at a previous meeting. For the folks at home, the Public Service Commission authorized and enabled municipalities to step in the shoes of the utility to determine where the default energy supply coming into the community should come from. And we, along with many other municipalities in the Hudson Valley, chose to participate in this group effort to get group buying power, much like you would get at a Costco or a Walmart in order to secure a fixed rate for the energy supply portion of it. We had Glenn Weinberg from Jewel Assets with us about a month ago to give us a sort of a report on what transpired over the course of that year and a half and sort of that roller coaster curve that you imagine might happen with energy supply costs through a pandemic. And then we saw in the last couple of months much higher rates, quite a bit higher than the rates that people are paying who join the program. And so this resolution we have is just authorizing the execution of the extension. The final bids will be in Wednesday, as a matter of fact. And so this authorizes me on behalf of the board to approve two potential options. One is a blend of 50% New York State renewable sources along with the remainder national wind at prices not to exceed 0.065 cents per kilowatt. And that there'll be another alternate perhaps of what we had this last round, which was 100% New York State renewable sources. Hydro essentially at 0.068 cents per kilowatt hour. And just to give you an idea of where prices are these days, the last April CCA comparable rate was a little over seven cents. So, you know, it was a tad higher. Obviously, these energy rates move with the markets and other incidents. And so one of the benefits that we you know, like to make folks aware of about joining a program like this is it gives you a fixed rate throughout the life of the program. And if that works to your benefit or something you're interested in. There will be two information sessions that will happen in the month of May. One will take place next week, a night of which that will be established in the next day or two, and then towards the end of May, and that's for the public answer questions as we have in the past. And then you can decide whether or not you want to stay in this program. It's completely up to you. You can exit the program at any time. So Deanna, we have a resolution number?
Twenty six.
Twenty six. Dated April 26th. Any questions before we entertain this resolution, Town Board? Okay, so it's authorizing the execution of a 2021 CCA electricity supply agreement pursuant to an agreement between the town of Red Hook and Jewel Assets Incorporated. And I should point out that many more communities, Rhinebeck, included, are joining this second round of this program. And who would like to move this resolution?
Someone moved.
Thank you, Christine. Is there a second? Thank you, Bill O'Neill. All in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
And myself. Very good. Thank you very much. We'll put more information on the website tomorrow, Matt, to direct people to when those information sessions will be scheduled. Before we conclude tonight's special meeting, we did receive some correspondence from our Highway Superintendent who wanted us to go ahead and to approve the task order of the GIS work by our engineers, tie in bond for a fee not to exceed 6,500. And so in order to keep that moving for the department, I'd like to ask you to go ahead and to approve that tonight as well. Everyone okay with that? All in favor?
Doing a motion or?
Well, I'm about to. All in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Very good. All right, folks, that's all we have for this evening. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is the 28th, which is this Wednesday. And then our next May meeting is the second Tuesday, May 11th. So with that, I make a motion that we close tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill. Good night, everyone.